Well, she's got seriously red shoes on. Girl could resist.
Okay, we put this on.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mind the light. Monday, January 13th. I will leave all the commission special work session. Your orders, go call please.
Mayor Cherry?
Yes.
Mayor Christian Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pico?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Horn.
Thank you. Discussion items: Animal shelter, Kathy McClellan, please.
And now, Anto. You want to start? Or do you want me to start?
Ah, I'm good. Do you want to want to start?
Okay.
So.
We're we're set up to do the next spay and neuter clinic for February 27.
Kathy, who else is there?
Her name is Angela.
Thank you.
Cersei.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Angela Cersei with Red Dog Rescue.
C D R C I. And she's Red Dog. Anyway, the next one is set up for February 27th, 28th, March 1st and 2nd. Delordi is not available, so I am now working on the fairgrounds. We are penciled in for those days, but I have not heard back from Daniel yet. I'm waiting on a call back from him to see if we can Google in there. Other than that, go ahead, Angela.
Yeah, we're just looking to get, I guess, confirmation on the location sooner than later. The vet staff, they're booking now for those dates. There's a lot of people needing to schedule their time. So we're hoping, definitely hoping something comes through on the location side of things. See here. In terms of city support, I guess, you know, how can we best support you? I know in terms of spay and neuter transfers, all that kind of stuff, I'd like to be able to hopefully open up the conversation a little bit more, including Chief, just to see how we can better serve the community. And there's also Dr. Susan Eeny, the lead veterinarian on the spay and neuter project. She's on the line as well.
So how many?
I'm here just to kind of find out what what you guys need, although I think with the last couple trips, we got a fairly good handle on that. Kind of talk about how you see the approach to the stray dogs, the maulings, kind of feral packs. Kind of what your thoughts are on that and how I can help. And then also just trying to figure out, you know, budget wise, how we can make this sustainable. These clinics are expensive. No, anyway, you cut it as far as supplies and everything. So we're hoping maybe the community will, you know, help with hotel rooms, food, you know, those kinds of things. Everything we can offset just goes right back into more spay and neuter or house calls or whatever did you guys need? And last time we came to the meeting, we had asked about the city budget. Is that something that you guys have found more information out on? Or something that you'd be able to discuss with us potentially? You know, what might be available for spay and neuter versus transfer options and so forth?
We can't answer that unless the manager can.
The best I can say is we have hired a finance director. She won't be starting until next week. So at this point, we don't have any current financial reports. So we don't know where we're at in regards to the animal services budget.
So I do have a question, Mr. Ware. I guess I'm neutral on this. I missed the last meeting. So I don't know really much about the rest thing. Or this is what's on social media. I think it's a good, everything that's happening, but.
The last clinic was four days. We altered 312 animals this morning. And that was trapping PNR on feral cats as well as local people's animals. Getting them done. We were doing that for $25 a person. That included the surgery, microchip, all the shots and the rabies. For 25 bucks.
When was that?
That ended November. Well, no, mid-November, sorry.
Right. And not only that, every animal was received a rabies vaccine, disentrapment vaccine, feline vaccines, everybody was microchipped. So that if an animal now enters the Tufan Carey Shelter, you'll be able to scan the animal and track the animal back to the owner. So that's another good valuable service, especially with the amount of stray dogs wandering right now. But that was part of the $25 copay. And we were able to get that cost down because we had different supporters. Like we had NMDOG and Bonner Family Foundation pitched in $12,000 towards the clinic. So we were able to reduce that cost. And if you will allow me for a second, I just wanted to sort of bring up the human health hazard potential from a couple of different aspects. I actually just spoke with a veterinarian who has their masters in public health a few days ago when we were talking about Tufan Carey. You know, one thing is that the vast majority of your dogs are not vaccinated for rabies. And you guys sit very close to the border of Texas, which has the highest rate of rabies in domestic animals. So, you know, if you have random people getting bit on the street by these dogs, technically, they should be undergoing the rabies post-exposure treatment, which is about $10,000. So it's not any fun for anybody. The other thing is, you know, your feral cat problem. I mean, we drove around town at night and literally in 10, 15 minutes saw, you know, 40, 50 kitties running around yards and on the streets. Those cats are using your gardens, your yards, your flower beds as their litter box. And they can transmit paraplasmosis to pregnant women who don't wash their hands well enough, or they pick vegetables and don't wash them well enough. Roundworms carried by cats are the leading cause of preventable blindness in children. So if the cat, the kids are playing in the dirt and put their hands in their mouth, they can end up with worms. And some of those migrate to the eye and cause irreparable damage. So I think there's a lot of different reasons to try and tackle this, you know, from a human health perspective, just from a humane perspective, but also just keeping your town, you know, safe. You certainly, you know, don't want to be on the CDC's radar for a case of human rabies because they get a little prickly about that. And the feral cats, you know, we trap and we can trap them very easily. The problem is, is they have no owner to even contribute that $25 fee. And so they're a total loss for us as far as drugs, suture, doctor time, tech time. And that, I think, we would definitely, if we're going to tackle that, need the city's help with offsetting those costs for the feral cats. I think everybody always asks, why don't you just trap them and euthanize them? And that's a good question. They've shown in a lot of different studies that that just creates a vacuum and more cats move in. So, you know, the only way to get ahead of it is trap, neuter, release, or else every cat in Quay County is going to converge on town when they hear that the town's empty of kitties. Apparently, there's a group living at your Taco Bell as we speak. So if you get rid of one of those cats, another cat's just going to show up and be like, hey, I'll eat Taco Bell. So, and it doesn't happen right away. You know, you trap, neuter, release, it's going to take a couple of years to get ahead of it. I don't want to sugarcoat that part of it. The cool part, it seems like everybody in the community is open to the services. All of pet owners were incredibly grateful. Everybody seems really open and wanting something that is cost. Just kind of getting a lot done at once in the community to hopefully catch up with the problem sooner than later. I think we'll, with 312 fixed this last time, if we do, we're going to do another 300, 310 or so in February, February, March. So you'll start to feel less and see less burden, less litters and feel less of a burden for the litters. I'm sure Paws will hopefully, in time here halfway through the year, feel less strained for having to rescue so many.
Angela, what will happen if we don't raise enough money?
We'll have to raise the cost. And it means that it's not going to be accessible to the people that need it most, is really what it comes down to. The people that need it most, I mean, like we said when we came last time, Dr. Susan and I went and saw 77 animals in four homes. It's not, this isn't about trying to get anybody in trouble. It just identifies a problem, right? Like, we have a problem. We don't have services. People are trying to keep animals off the streets themselves. And they're doing so in a manner that ultimately ends up harming, harming the animals, right? By trying to do the right thing. So we've got this kind of weird thing going on that we just, we just, I don't know. I fell in love with Tufan Carey when I came out to the shelter. And, you know, I love, I love Wander. I like, I love Chief Lopez. You have all the right players to really, like, take your animal welfare climate right now and just spin, be like, yes, put Tufan Carey on the map for being socially, you know, socially conscious sheltering and just having, like, programs in place that really rock it. I feel like you guys are right at a pivotal point for kind of a model program for others in Mexico.
So how many more times will we need to do spay and neuter clinics? And what do you anticipate the cost to be if things go on?
I mean, if we can get 15, I think we figured the number out because I started a fundraiser. It's online. It's on Facebook. Communities raised $1,400 towards 15,000. So I broke it down, 15,000 per clinic. Dr. Susan and I felt that three to four clinics this year would be good. More would be better just because of the feral cat colony component. We're actively looking for grant money to help your community with some of these feral cat colonies, obviously with your permission with the cat colony guardian's permission as well. We would never go in and just start doing this without having full consent from everybody. We were just able to, you know, help quite a few dogs from the community, you know, in addition to helping with the shelter, kind of get off off and onto different situations. But 15,000 for spay and neuter clinics, for each spay and neuter clinic that you want to do, I think would help offset that cost so that the community is still having to pitch in that $25 because I feel it's important that everybody has a, has some skin in the game and shows a little bit of responsibility. But that being said, if somebody doesn't have money, we covered the cost and we find sponsors to help cover that cost for people who truly cannot afford a service. Or somebody who might have 10 cats or six dogs, right? The cost, you know, can be challenging as well. Sometimes we work with groups that end up cost splitting. So everybody takes a chunk, right? We say, here's this person in town. They want to sponsor the hotel costs. And then here's this other business in town and they want to handle all the lunches. And, you know, we can put everybody's logos, flyers and things like that. So that's another approach. And I think that Paws, Kathy, you guys, we're going to go out and talk to some of the local businesses to help, you know, maybe take some of that financial burden. And we don't make money off clinics. It's not a moneymaker for us. It's break even or lose at best. We're constantly writing grants to cover and provide services and so forth. And again, we see that this is a worthy community of investing our heart, our time, our souls into. I would like to make this a year-long project to really help you guys get the structure and the guidance and all of that stuff to get you guys back into being, I think, an awesome shelter manager too. Or a shelter manager in training perhaps. Wanda's been doing a fabulous job over there, just keeping track of everything and keeping the animals flowing. We've been helping try to get some of the animals out, just low processing transfers these days. And as friends, Animal Society is also offering training for shelter and animal control staff for you guys. When you get some, when you get people officially hired on, they're willing to provide training for your staff.
Mr. Ware. The current penalty on the F R.
It's easy to think that.
Yeah, I just said that.
Just a minute.
Well, not too high for these clinics. But you have to remember, we're moving whole crews down from Denver. You know, so they're missing a day of work just to drive down. They're missing a day of work to drive home.
And Jelena interrupted just a minute.
Bring in loads of equipment. That's a lot of trips and a lot of gas. So it just adds up really quickly.
Let us interject here for just a second.
Go ahead, Ms. Ware.
Yep.
So my question was, is, maybe the clerk, obviously, would be able to help us with this. So the penalties that are for the F R's when they get caught and there's inside the municipal court, do you know what that actual penalty is? And do we have to run this to the state to possibly? Or how much does go back to the state? You know, there's a municipal ordinance and let me pay it, does it stay here a portion of it? Or a portion goes?
Does it all stay here? Is that correct, Chief? Just a uniform traffic goes to the state. So it all stays in the city.
So is it, I don't know when the last time that's actually been increased, but is it possible that we can increase that and then a percentage goes to the state?
We discussed that and you didn't have a, no, you didn't have any increase in the, you were going over the animal order, that you remembered.
Right, right. The ball has been dropped there, but I, I don't know that increasing it at this point is going to do any good because it's not being enforced at all.
And so that's where I was going with it. So we really need to get enforcement.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to say this, I brought this up last Friday. I was actually a block away from my house and those were four dogs. I didn't think nothing of it, but they were, they were taking somebody across the street. Dogs over there, when they seen me, they started barking. I just kept on walking, sure enough, they were coming. Good thing I was just, we had some noise. So we've got to get it handled. And so I think this spay and neuter clinic is a good idea. And I don't think it just needs to stop for more than two years. We need to continue to have it. But my thing is, is the cost savings that we've had since we haven't had an ACO for several months. What is the cost savings that we save since we haven't had an ACO at that time?
So currently, Wanda is working as a contract worker, I think at four hours a day. My. So initially budgeted for regular salaries was $32,000 and part-time salaries was $16,000, with overtime on salaries being $6,000. Now, that's not including the coverage for health insurance, Para, FICA, Medicare, workers' comp, unemployment, retirees' help, which that right there would be roughly around $30,000.
Hundred thousand dollars if you can put it.
Correct.
For one full-time and one part-time.
Yeah.
So you look at what's planned, so.
So that's what, that's what's the budget. We haven't paid any of that because Wanda's not an employee. She is a contract worker, so she doesn't get any of these benefits.
Oh, none of the benefits, but she is getting us the salary.
Yeah, four hours a day.
And that's just for cleanup and feeding?
Yes, that comes out of contract services, not our employee salary benefits.
I think, I don't know, just from observing this, I think the problem when we have animal control overwhelmed by answering calls. So I think that's something an animal tech should still be making on, you know, future. But the only way that I see that we can actually pull this, or even kind of consider helping, even I'm speaking for myself, is that that's what we'd be able to kind of help with, not have an ACO. But we get a budget this year and we only budget this, we can budget for spay and neuter clinics, you know, all that stuff. But again, it comes back to what we have financially. What I really get into is our ordinance says after so many days that a week, one dog, we put it down. I know we don't want to go to that route. And I'm not an advocate for that, but there's going to be a point that we have to figure through that. And I'm going to actually quote, like, we're calling. She came in here one day and said, you know, these dogs are part of the outfit because of the condition. It's actually improved now, thankfully. But the point I'm getting here is like, if we're not moving them out, we're going to get overcrowded. And I think a lot of people.
And you're sure the spay and neuter piece comes in, comes in as, is going to help you guys on this end of things? Because if an animal gets impounded, if they hadn't been spayed and neutered, you can actually enforce them being spayed and neutered, or they have to be surrendered. You can write that ordinance the way that you want. I'd be very careful right now just because we don't have solid transfer options. Just, you know, automatically euthanizing the healthy animals. I think there should be a way that we can go like even door to door. Go door to door with the chief and just offer services and just say, hey, what do you have? Sometimes just asking people, hey, you know, those three houses that we helped rehome a ton of animals from, it was like, hey, looks like you need some help here. And they were like, thank God, yes. We offered, you know, we moved seven animals out of one man's house and helped him with fencing so his dogs could get off chains. But it was just a quick conversation to help adjust his numbers. And now he's more in line with your ordinance. So I, again, just another part of the service that we're willing to, willing to help with.
We really need to get back to enforcing ordinances. And it's hard. Nobody wants to be in animal control. Nobody wants to do it towards their comporting. It's a hard job and it's not a very favorable job. But that's my concern is if our ordinance says this and we're not doing it, then we might as well take it out.
We're still going to have to do that, even in addition to the clinics that they want to have. I still, yeah, it would be correcting that just with the clinics.
Animals get out. That's the way that they want to have it.
I know it's.
And if they're waiters, they can go home.
How many calls?
No, I really don't have that number back. It is every day.
Because they don't make a report every time. But dispatch will have that. And they could pull that. That'd be something nice to know. Because I'm sure it's three or four times a day. Half a day.
So this is just a question off the wall. And I don't even know if you can do this with a budget. But the money that you save by not having an ACO, can you use that for the spay and neuter clinic?
That's our problem, I think. I'm sorry.
That's also.
That we still have to have that in addition to what you can provide. We're still going to have to have the dangerous animals picked up.
Sure.
And incarcerated.
Yeah, but what I'm just saying is this, this session right now that you don't have an ACO, that money that you haven't paid out, can that go towards the spay and neuter?
So my concern at the end of the day is the anti-donation. That's going to be an issue because we're a government entity providing services. We're funds to a private or is it nonprofit?
They're not, they're nonprofit.
We're a nonprofit and we're written that way, it is with.
It doesn't matter if it's a nonprofit.
Oh, it does.
And this is according to our training.
Okay, so that's a no.
So why don't you hire me and Angela as a contractor and use that money to pay me and then that lessens the spay and neuter cost, pay my technician, that lessens your spay and neuter cost prices? You know, is there a workaround for us to be 1099? Kind of like Wanda is, you know, as a contract worker?
If it's under a certain amount.
We still haven't done, you know, we've done, we've done that with other entities.
Services have been provided?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Would it be depending on a certain amount and what services are provided? If they're just actually, for instance, kennel tags or animal control? You know, with those, I don't know. I'm going to ask the clerk to kind of, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I don't know how we can.
Because it's a, it is a professional services, you can go up to so high before it has to be.
We can also have you guys buy us supplies. You know, I send you guys an email saying I need $1,000 worth of suture and you buy it. And then that way, nobody, there's no money exchanging hands as far as salary or hours or whatever. So, you know, supplying the consumables is another way to get around.
I do think it'd be a good idea if you send the manager.
Kansas City, you know, they work outside of the range. It would be essentially hiring outside children.
And they can brainstorm what would be the best incentive for sale.
Yeah, because we're out of time today. So are you reading or?
So if they are providing a service, it will be considered consideration which negates the anti-donation concern because it isn't a donation.
There's a great pro quo within it's allowed.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would it be better that these, these ladies sit with you as well as this and kind of figure out an idea, what would be the best solution? And then we have to run by legal. Because again, we need to curb the, you know, the population, the people that are breeding, the people that just think they can have 20 dogs and it's fine. Because, you know, they can't even keep them in the yard. It's hard.
And that's against ordinance now.
Yeah.
And I think the other thing to remember is, is that it's very large. With these sorts of programs. So about 12 years ago, Denver decided to ban pit bulls. They rounded up pit bulls and killed them by the hundreds and not thousands, probably thousands. It was a nightmare. It was publicity nightmare. They were on the news. Everybody was crying about their dead dogs. They got just torn apart in the media and the community. And, you know, you, you might see some benefit with grandfathering in some people or something like that. Because if you go to door to door and start gathering animals and euthanizing them, while that will be effective in keeping people in line with the ordinance, I guarantee the news crew will be there the very next day standing over a euthanized dog and a crying owner and making you guys out to be, you know, bad people.
I don't think we'll go door to door. I think it's the ones that we have in the kill that people are neglecting and not wanting to come pick them up because it's an easy way to get rid of them. Those are the.
Or dumping them.
Yeah, dumping them. That's what we're, I think that's the problem that we're having. I don't think it's the responsible owners. I think it's these people that don't care and just let them run loose. And, and I don't know, chiefly, the rest of people will tell you how these people respond. Is this your dog? They'll probably say, no, I don't really know because they don't want to deal with the penalty. So that's my concern is the ones, the responsible owners are having to pay the consequences and these ones that are dumping them and don't care. Don't get people.
Yeah, I think, I think it's reasonable to start with the ones that are running at large, right? You know, the one house we went to had 17 dogs, but they weren't cared for as well as my personal dogs, I would say. So like, he doesn't really, he's not the problem, right? It's the dogs that just run in and out of somebody's yard and are attacking people. Like, that's your, that's your hazards there.
So would you mind getting with Renee, Kathy? Y'all can have a conversation and some kind of recommendation for it.
Absolutely.
We might say no, or we might say yes, but.
Angela, what do you absolutely have to know in the next like day or so?
For, I'm sorry, for what, for the location?
Yes, is that like your number one thing?
That's our number one thing right now. Because I'm like, we have a big enough space. If there's not like a beauty center or a sort of gymnasium.
Well, now I've got, I'm penciled in for the fairgrounds, which is kind of the exhibit center. And I'm penciled in for that. I just have to talk to the manager and I'm on his voicemail for him to call me back. So I should get one tomorrow. So I think we're pretty much a go there. I just wanted to weigh the beat so that we don't have that expense as well. But that will work. And then I'm going to, I'll get with Renee and the chief and we'll, we'll start pounding out some numbers for money and stuff. counting up some numbers for money and stuff.
And I don't want to give the impression that I'm anti-euthanasia, because I'm not. We were there the first time, I did euthanize four dogs in the shelter, that I didn't think were social enough to be rehomed. One one bit my face, so we said, no, not safe. And I am willing to come down and euthanize on a regular basis for you guys, for those animals that are just not suitable to be rehomed, for whatever reason, maybe it's medical, maybe it's behavioral, maybe they're 18 years old, I mean, whatever the case is, we don't want to just warehouse them. I would rather let them go to dog heaven than let them sit in that cage for god knows how long. So, you know, that's where we're hoping to be able to get in there regularly, assess them, pull the ones that are good candidates, and then, you know, there's going to be some that just need to be put down for everybody's safety. And I don't disagree with that, I've actually done that for several shelters, and it's just part of, it's part of the deal.
Okay, Angela, thank you very much. Doctor?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll do it tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Donald.
A quick reminder for us, if you could, just look into legality on this, it's like, if we did, like they kind of mentioned, hiring this work service, you know, and again, probably going to come through, and then people that want to get the dogs, maybe they would come pay us, I think, come to the city hall, pay for a ticket, maybe go to the bank, and that type of, I don't know how there's going to be people looking at it.
Okay.
Because that kind of eliminates, you know, that innovation or whatever, but-
Are you suggesting they come here to pay their co-pay?
Yeah, kind of something.
Well, the way we worked it for the last week, is that when they picked up their animal, they paid.
Okay.
So just, I mean, if you wanted to have an employee at the clinic that could collect the money?
I don't like that.
Yeah, the other thing I was going to suggest too, is if you wanted to have somebody there that could sell city licenses at the same time.
That is a good idea. Yeah, okay, yeah, the same version, yeah, okay, so be with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, Kathy. Move on to business license.
Yes, so, it was brought to my attention, I guess, at the beginning of December, about several businesses in the city of Tecomparry, within the city of Tecomparry, that had business license and hadn't paid their business license for several years, if not quite a few years. So, the crimes office, they put together this spreadsheet that shows the businesses that are past due on several of their business license, and the totals. The total right now is, today is at $3,825 for past due business license. Prior to the girls working on it, it was at $5,500. So they have managed to collect quite a bit of back due business license.
And how are they doing that?
I don't know.
How are they collecting the past due, or they call on the business, or did the business get a letter saying they're in there?
It's been different, I mean, like, the business owner will come in to pay their water, and it'll be like, oh, by the way, you owe four years of business license.
Okay.
Or just phone calls that are coming in, you know, asking, so, and then word of mouth. Yeah, so.
So that was then lead up to my first question is, till March 1st, how do you handle the ones that haven't paid? Does there a letter go out saying that they're non-compliant with their city ordinance?
So, I believe in February is when we sent out a reminder saying, hey, the $10 late fee will be assessed March 15th.
Okay, and then after that, if they're non-compliant?
That's where we need your assistance, because the ordinance, as it is now, there's really no teeth in us doing anything to be able to collect these business license. But that also goes back to the state statute, right? Yes.
So if they haven't paid a business license, and they're receiving utility service from us, awards, can we?
I asked two different services, I asked at a conference one time.
How many licenses do we have, approximately?
About three, 349, something like that, yeah.
No, I meant total license.
Yes, 349.
Oh, 349, okay. So what is your guys' suggestion? What do you guys recommend?
My suggestion would be, is we would need the police department to help us, or code enforcement help us enforce it. I can't go knock on their door, their business, go to their business and let them know, I don't have that authority. We would need somebody of authority to knock on their door and say, hey, you're not just one year, you're six years behind, and you're still conducting business.
So, it consists of about $200 to send a letter out, right? They're all like, my suggestion is, after the March 1st deadline, get a letter saying that they're not compliant. They have so many days to get compliant, or the code officer issues a citation. There is no, nothing in the state statute, there are ordinance that there isn't. We have the late fees, right?
The what? The CEO, 24 cents? No. Or code enforcement, we signed, Friday was their last day.
So, have code enforcement handled that?
Yes, correct, minor.
So, when's the last time has these fees been increased?
State law says the most we can charge is $35.
And the late fees?
Late fees, $10.
Okay. I agree with Mary says, and then again, it actually will help us curb down to see if these businesses are still active, you know, because they got to specify the location of that, so if they're not longer there, then kind of looking further. And I think Mr. Bree though just said that Harry Peppers was even here no more, right?
So again, lack of communication, you know, with them, that informance, that way.
It brings up another ten key. Who enforces what? Okay, first is, in Albuquerque, when somebody applies for a business license, you don't check to see if they're meeting the zoning, right?
So, our process is, just real quick, when somebody comes in with a business license application, the first thing we ask for, is the first thing we make sure that they have is a tax ID number, that's issued by the state of New Mexico. We then send it over to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning will then say, yes, it's in the proper zoning, we can proceed with them establishing a-
Okay, that happens now.
Yes, sir.
But it hasn't in the past.
It always has since I've been here.
How do we end up with hairdressers and residential?
They didn't pull permits, and we were unaware.
They did not what?
Pull permits.
Oh.
For their construction of their building. Oh, their building.
But what I'm getting at is, when they apply for a license, they have a, they go to planning and zoning, or community development, and they say, yeah, they're in a correct zone?
So we have two situations, right, of same exact business, type of business, one, proper steps weren't taken on their side, right? That license still hasn't been approved or denied, and still kind of lingering there, it's been a couple of years. But then, yet we have another one, that I believe it was approved by planning and zoning, I'm not sure why they need to do a site visit, but nonetheless, it was approved. What do you do at that point? It was brought to my attention after the license was issued, when planning and zoning says, yes, they're ready to go, they're in the proper zoning, I knew that, I have no reason to question their approval. So, in that situation, in the latter situation, we issued the license, and I believe there may have been, there may have been a problem with zoning in that area.
So, I've had this discussion between our zoning ordinances and our compliance, the weed ordinances and others. Who enforces what? Who is it all on? Because the compliance officer has not been trained in zoning.
Right.
And anybody at planning or the community development, there's nobody there to enforce zoning. So how are we doing this? And can we come up with a solution to do this?
So, there are two different, I guess, compliance there, you got to go to a certain school to be certified, and build its instructions and stuff like that.
Like a compliance and a code enforcement, so you're asking.
Yeah, because I think you would have to work coincide with CID, like they put it up a hardcore, and like right now, I've had so complaints in my district, that somebody's putting up a fence that's ten foot tall, well, is somebody going in there, making sure this is not happening? And this individual's, it really is, because these people are complaining that they can't even look back at other drivers. So, and then some people are coaching on, on being able to pull a sidewalk, it's just, I think it's getting enhanced, but again, where do you find that? They got to see ID training.
So I have to go, first I have to see if there's even a job description for that, with the two different positions.
Yes, please.
So, and then from there, we can determine what needs to be done, either post the position, update the job description.
So, let me ask you this, when, again, I'm just interested, when did we get away from code enforcement, from being compliant? And they come up with one?
I have no idea, that was before my time.
Probably before shit was born.
Probably.
No, it was, I'm going to say probably 2000, maybe 2012?
You're definitely, I was going to say, about the time you can do work.
Yes.
You know why we?
I don't know, I have no idea, it's just a change that took place and-
Because it used to be in community development.
Correct.
Well, yeah.
Because then that's the way with releasing off the yard sale permits and all that other stuff that you're supposed to be getting.
Chief left, but I think it had something to do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chief.
No, you're good.
Then it might have had something to do with writing citations, I don't know. Is it possible that planning and zoning can be certified to write citations to municipal board?
That I'm not actually sure on, and we were doing just criminal summons, so if we're going to be doing citations, we'll check into how the other agencies are doing, yeah. But as far as zoning and all that stuff, our folks have never been trained in that. It was always a function of planning and development.
Right, so, the compliance officer has been under you, or under the police department since about 12 or 13?
That's correct.
And they're allowed to issue the summons or the citation?
Summons, yes.
Okay. And so, my suggestion is that you have the manager and y'all work this out, and see how the other agencies or cities do the summons, and let's get it.
So, I understand, it's a summons?
It's a criminal summons, yes.
But it's not an actual citation? So the judge is the one that imposes the penalty against for not complying with their properties against, that's how it works?
That's correct.
But it's a summons, so it's not like a non-traffic or citation that they can sign them and pay by mail?
It's not, no, they have to go to court.
So if they fail to respond to that summons, is there a warrant issued out for them?
Eventually, typically, they send more letters and stuff like that, and then if they continue to fail to show up, then yes.
And that's what's happening now?
Occasionally, yes, very often.
So I'm also working with taxation and revenue, I've always been curious that who's paying taxes, who has a business license, who doesn't have a business license, and who's paying taxes?
That's why you require the CRS?
Correct, and back in the day, we were able to call taxation and revenue, get ahold of somebody, and confirm the CRS number, if it was active or not, and we would move forward, right? That stopped there during COVID, I believe. I wasn't able to make that contact with an employee, I had to go through answering the shooting leave a message, somebody would call, sometimes nobody would call. But now we're back on, we have a contact with taxation and revenue. In regards to a separate matter, I made contact with a gentleman with taxation and revenue last week, and he mentioned to me, businesses that aren't paying taxes, that it's tax fraud, and that we need to check into it, and there's probably quite a bit. He said, just generally in New Mexico, he said not to compare it specifically, he said, but generally in New Mexico, there's a lot of businesses that are behind paying taxes. And he referred me to the tax fraud investigation department, the taxation and revenue, and so I will be working on that hopefully soon.
So, that, what?
I was just, another issue that I know of is, people that are doing like photography or nail techs or barber's hairstylist, without coming in and getting a business license, but everybody knows that they're still doing these tax services, so.
I mean, they're not just missing, they're just not missing the business license, they're missing the state side of it, right? The state certification. I get phone calls like that often, so and so have a business license, or are they licensed to do nails, or licensed to cut hair? No, that's my answer. And if they are, of course, my answer is yes, but most of the time, the ones that people are calling on, they don't have a business license.
So some of these businesses that, some of these businesses are listed on this list are providing services in city to compare, we do have a couple of them, we pretty much put top and say, do you get compliance with us, they will continue to raise it to view, or?
Where are we looking at specifically?
I think there's a couple here that, number 31.
Actually came in and picked up an application in last week.
How much sure do we do business with them?
I think they provide, so, 31, 37, 45, you know, just kind of curious.
Okay.
I also noticed some businesses on here in 2023 that I guess came when we had that detailed one. I know a lot of the companies came from, say, Albuquerque or wherever, do they own that fee for 2023? Or is it something that they have to, I'm sure they paid the taxes right away to get a license here in the county or the city, but if they haven't closed out nothing, or if they haven't kept city in the city, do they still owe, is it still generated as a fee? Or is it something that they have to call in and stop before the fee stops?
I don't know if they're finding business or doing business in Tecomparry.
Right, so they have to call in and say, you know, we're not doing business in the city no more.
And it's simple when they get that letter every year.
Let me get some.
Yeah.
I've had several.
And so we have, Mr. Rico mentioned number 21, I just not had any contact with this business owner, I didn't know they were open or closed, I had no idea. I don't know unless they communicate with that.
Yeah, so that's something that they have, and if you say, hey, we haven't been in business since 2023, do we waive that charter, or are we still?
I think we still are.
Right.
We still collect the money and make money off.
Yeah, they probably disagree. If they stop doing business here, then they don't have a license anymore.
Well, they have to show valid proof of not doing business, or some kind of a-
You have statements saying you're not doing business, or when you send them a summons, say, I have-
Technically, they don't have a business license.
Pardon me?
Technically, they don't have a valid business license.
So they can't be working here.
And if they aren't, without a business license?
Then they shouldn't be, yeah. Anything else on this?
Whatever you recommend, suggest, right, to our team.
I will be working on a very detailed business license, I'm organized as well.
Do we want to go on with the next, I'm ready.
You've only got five minutes, and I'm sure it's going to take a lot longer than five minutes.
You know how I am. You don't want to wait till next meeting?
I think we'll have to, because it's going to be a little discussion, right?
Chris has anything else?
On the code enforcement, I know she came in here last time and said that training was needed for any building. for any building, uh, citations or any of that. Have we put that, that job out for, um?
Code enforcement?
Well, the building part of it. I, I think Tucumcari is running rugged with, um, kind of doing what the heck they want to do anymore? And there's no enforcing that anymore.
And I agree with, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I think a lot of it is that these people that use the furniture are not in compliance, you know, like with the fence and shed or anything like that. Because you gotta go to time to make sure that you're sort of like zone and stuff like that. So I think, I really would be smart that these two people be working together. You know, and you go out and go check this job and see what's going on, so.
Because somebody at community development knows the zoning, you know?
Yeah.
Because citizens are colliding with all this. Well, if my neighbor's doing it, I'm gonna do it and, you know, and so and so. So it's, it's just becoming out of control like every other ordinance that we have here in Tucumcari.
You know, then you have those ones that, that are trying. They're trying to get their permit and CID takes eight, nine, ten months to give them a license. Um, some of them are left without a choice but to move on with their project, right? But I, I don't know what we can do at our end to help CID move these applications along, if, if anything at all. But I believe that's also a key in the system. CID takes a long time. Our application process is very lengthy.
To get a permit to.
To get a permit, yes.
And permits for what, who's CID?
All GB ninety eight projects, um.
As far as electrical building and so.
I love it.
Carports and buildings over a certain dimension.
Yeah. Takes that long?
Require that.
I'm not too sure about specific what categories, right? But I know that there's some that.
Yeah, it all depends on that.
Well, is that just approved by planning and development? And they go out and look at it? I mean, if they're doing electrical and plumbing, why is there, it going up to?
Anybody that does electrical, plumbing, they have to do a permit with CID.
But that's electrical.
Or general building, any, any of them.
So just building a metal fence along your property, you have to go through the state?
If a contractor could.
No, well, yeah, I guess it depends, yeah. It'll, but there's an open, for instance, you put a, a shed, you know? You gotta be so, like, so far away from the alley, you know?
The neighbors or whatever.
The neighbors, yeah. And so a lot of you start to see all these tough sheds.
Yeah.
People, buildings.
So you gotta go through CID for that?
So when you do a building.
Yeah, just planning.
For planning, like you, I'm, I'm gonna put up a storage shed and have a contractor do it. He has to do a permit. It goes to CID. They then turn, send the city a questionnaire or tell them that they've issued a permit for this building, does it conform to zoning? And then the city can tell the, the builder then, it's not zoned for that, you can't build it. Good. That's the way it used to work.
So how is it working now, Mike?
I, you know, I don't know. I, I.
Like the people that are building these tough sheds, you know, that grew on C set type things, you know?
They're, they're already built.
And so they're setting them in there, so don't they still gotta get a permit?
No, but that's where it comes back to community development. They're supposed to see that and make sure they do the setbacks.
Yes. That's what was my, that was my question. I don't know if I confused.
But, but we don't have anybody doing that.
Yeah, so something that little would go to planning and zoning.
You should, and they, they're supposed to get a permit from planning and zoning also.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, oh, yeah, that was my question.
So I think education as well. Maybe, you know, taking advantage of Facebook and putting out our code and then on Facebook so people can read it. They're aware that these are codes, um, business licenses, um, what we require. Just educate, I think. I think communication knowledge is, is powerful. So I think if they know, then they don't have a reason to not be able to comply.
Anything else, gentlemen? There'll be a churn for a few minutes before we start.